At this time, we don't have any, oh, we have one attendee. And it's Evelyn. So we're good unless Evelyn wants to make a public comment. And so Evelyn, if you want to make a public comment, you can put your information in the Q and A. The Board of Education for U forty-six will come to order in about two minutes. For those attendees who have joined us, if you would like to make a public comment during tonight's public comment section, you can enter your name, address, and topic in the Q and A section on the panel at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And we'll be sure, we will be sure to call on you at the public comment portion of the meeting. Once again, the U forty-six Board of Education will come to order in about one minute. Individuals who are in the attendance mode, you are free to insert your name, address, and topic if you would like to be called upon during the public comment section of the meeting. Again, if you go down to the bottom of your Zoom screen, you will see a Q and A section. If you place your name, address, and topic, we will be glad to call on you during that section. Madam President, I think it is now seven o'clock.
Okay, then I will call the May fourth, twenty twenty, U forty-six Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Here.
Ms. Nolan? Ms. Nolan?
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mrs. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Madam President?
Here. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first two items on the agenda tonight are Proclaimations. And I will begin with the proclamation for National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I want to say a few words before I read the proclamation. This is a proclamation we do every year, but I think this year it means something different. I think for the past few weeks have made all of us appreciate the time and the effort that teachers put into their work and the many challenges they face on their, in their jobs. Particularly, I want to thank our teachers for their work in the past few weeks where they've moved very rapidly from traditional classroom settings into distance learning. And have done this, they've totally had the way that totally have had to change the way they deliver education in a very short period of time. I don't think any of our teachers ever imagined that they would be teaching a class of students where not only were the kids not in their room or their building, but might not even be in their town or in their county. So and they may be doing this teaching while they're also working with their own children. So thank you again to all of our teachers. And I would now like to read the proclamation. So proclamation of appreciation, National Teacher Appreciation Week, whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore be it resolved, the U forty-six Board of Education proclaims May fourth through eighth, twenty twenty to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved, the School District, U forty-six Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this fourth day of May, twenty twenty, signed by Susan Kerr, Board President, and Superintendent Tony Sanders. And I know we have Ms. Bettis here, if she'd like to say a few words on behalf of the teachers.
I do. And thank you so much for those kind words and the recognition of all the hard work that's been going on these past few weeks. I want to thank the school board for recognizing us this, this week. So I accept this recognition on behalf of our twenty-seven hundred teachers. As you stated, this is even more important this year during this unexpected event of distance learning. It's impacted us all in many, many ways as our district and our teachers rose to deliver instruction to students in a way we never could have imagined. I have to say this, the collaboration between the district and the teachers, I think, has been remarkable and has helped our teachers, it's helped our students, it's helped our community to deliver instructions in a way we never could have imagined. And it allowed our teachers to work with compassion and commitment. So again, thank you very much for this recognition and honoring the work, the hard work that has been done by our teachers. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay, and the second proclamation is for National School Nurse Day. And again, I'd like to say a few words. I'd like to take a moment to thank the school nurses for all the work they do on behalf of our families and our children. The last few weeks have shown that healthcare workers truly are heroes in our society. As we look to the future, your role will be, will continue to be vital to the health and safety of all of our students. We truly appreciate you and thank you for all you have done for us. And now I'll read the proclamation. This is a proclamation of appreciation, National School Nurse Day, whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success, in supporting students in times of crisis. And whereas school nurses address the various factors that impact students' health. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting a wellness and improving health outcomes for children. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its school nurses in the valuable work of meeting the needs of today's students, now therefore be it resolved that the U forty-six Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, May sixth, twenty twenty, to be School Nurse Day. And be it further resolved that the School District, U forty-six Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our school nurses for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this fourth day of May, twenty twenty, signed by Sue Kerr, Board President and Superintendent Tony Sanders. I believe we have Mr. Judd here.
I am here and thank you so much. It is such an honor to accept this on behalf of the nursing staff. They have been so creative in meeting the needs of the students and the families in this whole new era of, I guess, we're moving on to a kind of a telehealth kind of situation. They've also rose well above that with really doing a lot of community work in their evenings. And so many of them, you may not even be aware, have returned back to the hospital setting and are fighting the COVID battle at this time on the weekend. So they literally are working seven days a week. So this really is for them. I have been joining them in that situation. So I get to experiences from so many perspectives and I can't tell you how appreciative and meaningful it is to have your support and appreciation. So I'm sorry, it's getting a little emotional because it really is a battle out there. And for those that don't get to see it, you know, we are so lucky as nurses to get to see this perspective of helping and sharing this experience with our staff or family, and then living it on the other end as well in the hospital setting, actually seeing the reality of this horrible pandemic. And just inspires us to carry out our work in the future and hopefully prevent this, the situation from occurring again. So thank you so much. It is, this is so meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you mind if I just add real quickly? I know that today we had a professional learning day for our teachers and I was pleased to be able to pop in and out of many different sessions just to thank our teachers on behalf of the board and on behalf of administration. And our nurses have been, many of our nurses have been in and out of the building. Jeff Judge made me do a video on how to put on a mask with him. And they've been over here getting things, materials and supplies ready for when our schools reopen. So we made sure that we thank them on behalf of the board as well. So thank, thank you also on behalf of administration.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is comments from the audience.
At this point, we do not have anybody who's entered in their name and information into the Q and A. So I'll once again make the announcement. Individuals who are joining our meeting as attendees, you can place your name, address, and the topic you would like to discuss in the Q and A section on the very bottom of your screen. If you do that, we will call upon you to make public comments at this time. We'll give you just a few minutes just to see if somebody puts their information in there. Is that okay, Sue?
Yeah, that's fine.
It does not appear as if we have any public comments, Madam President. There are no public comments.
Public comments, okay. It's a board member or superintendent updates. I have one update. I want to congratulate Dr. Sanders. He is now Dr. Sanders for his honorary doctorate from Jetson University, which he received last week. Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you. I still don't know that it qualifies me to be called doctor, but I'll, but I'll take it for tonight's meeting.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to mention to board members is I sent out something late this afternoon on email. IASB is looking for resolutions. So you can look over the form. We can have a future discussion on whether there are any resolutions we want to bring up in November. Hopefully, we have a meeting in November. So any other updates?
So I wanted to inform the board, we did, we were accepted as presenters for the triple I conference in November, if it does move forward. So the presentation we put together was the board superintendent relationship and evaluation process. And so that will move forward. If the, if the conference is held, that will be one of the presentations at the, at the conference. So thank you to Board President Kerr on working with me and getting that submitted.
Right. I'm looking forward to that. Moving on, FOIA requests, Mr. Sanders.
Before the Board of Education this night, tonight, are three Freedom of Information Act requests that are on the board book, and that will be placed on the website in the coming week. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions on the FOIA requests? My consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
On the consent agenda, we have the personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, April twentieth, twenty twenty, termination of Joseph Mason, a monitor, contract renewal for secondary instruction and equity for Apex Learning, a bid from plant operations for Streamwood High School exterior waterproofing foundation wall insulation repairs, and sidewalk and drainage improvements, project number three fourteen, a bid from plant operations for Washington Elementary School Sidewalk and Drainage Improvement Project fifteen forty-four, a bid from plant operations for Larson Middle School Sound System, project number five oh six, a bid from transportation for service truck purchase, proposal from curriculum instruction for kindergarten readiness backpacks for preschool, and finally, building permits for Abbott Middle School Paving Project number three fifty-five, Barlett High School Spring Trail Elementary School Paving Project number two oh six, two oh six dash fourteen twenty-five, Creekside Elementary School Paving Project number seven hundred, King and Woods Middle School Paving Project number four fifty, Larson Middle School Paving Project number five oh one, Larson Middle School Electrical Work Project number five oh six, and finally, Streamwood High School Tennis Courts Project number three twelve.
Are there any items that board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hey, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, this is Melissa.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
A discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
The first item in discussion action are itemized bills for May fourth, twenty twenty. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of nine million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
I have a motion to approve the listed bills in the amount of nine million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
So move, Eva Porter.
Second, this is Melissa.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
F.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
The next item are the approval of closed session minutes. Madam President, did you want to lead through this one?
Sure, I'll read this. This is a rather long motion, but let me read it. A motion is requested and the need for confidentiality still exists as to all are part of closed session minutes. And therefore, all closed session minutes, with the exception of the minutes already released, including audio recordings, remain confidential. In addition, all audio recordings more than eighteen months old, having been put into writing and approved, may be destroyed. This is for board, this follows board policy two point two oh one. So the following closed session minutes have been reviewed for approval, September twenty-third, twenty nineteen, October seventh and twenty-first, twenty nineteen, November fourth and eighteenth, twenty nineteen, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, January thirteenth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, February tenth and twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, March second and ninth, twenty twenty, and audio to be destroyed are for April twenty-third, twenty eighteen, May seventh, fourteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and twenty-first, twenty eighteen, June fourth and eighteen, June fourth and eighteenth, twenty eighteen, July twenty-third, twenty eighteen, August sixth and twentieth, twenty eighteen, September tenth and twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Uh, who was first?
Kate was first.
I second Eva Porter.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Our next discussion action item is board policy update, section six, graduation requirements. This is pursuant to an executive order the governor recently signed. Here to talk about the policy change will be Miguel Rodriguez. And then the implications of it that we're recommending to the board will be Lala Mistoric. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, essentially, I got to tell you, our policy is very flexible. So all we really had to do, for example, if you, I don't know if you're looking at it, but the second paragraph, all the policy says, unless otherwise accepted, each student must successfully accomplish the following in order to graduate from high school. So what we had to do is somewhere after there's, there's four, four points or four requirements. And then we added, the Board of Education shall comply with Executive Order twenty twenty dash thirty-one issued on April twenty-four, two thousand and twenty. And any other order already issued, or an order that will be issued by the Illinois Governor subsequent to this amendment suspending or modifying certain graduation requirements found in the Illinois School Code for the duration of those orders. So that makes it perfect to, to make whatever changes that we need to make. And Lala and the team did some really good, you know, did some very good work.
Yeah, so we, we joined, we, we read through all of the guidance, the executive order, the emergency rules. We joined a webinar with ISB and then we looked at our own graduation requirements. The ISB emergency rules allowed for some increased flexibility. They reduced the graduation requirements essentially by one semester of courses, knowing that this situation is not the fault of any of our seniors and we should not hold them responsible if they were for any reason unable to complete the requirements as they previously were. So we have some additional flexibility. So for our requirements, what we did is we took all of our requirements broken down by subject area, aligned them to what the emergency rules stated with, with ISB. And then we reduced our requirements from forty credits to thirty-three credits for all of our current twelfth grade cohort. So the cohort class of twenty twenty extends to the current twelfth graders. And then any students who were not promoted to twelfth grade will also, but are supposed to be part of that cohort will benefit from this as well. And so our counselors have been working since last week as soon as we were able to, to start this work, to review transcripts, to make sure that we don't miss any students who would be eligible to graduate under, under these revised requirements.
Before I do the motion, do people have any questions? No, okay, could I have a motion to approve? The the changes to board policy six point three zero zero graduation requirements.
So move.
Second, this is Melissa.
Who was the first one then?
Eva.
Thank you.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Okay, next on the agenda, any CAC people present, Mr. Sanders and the audience?
That I see, let me check the attendees. I do not see any. But I would like to ask if Mary Fergus doesn't mind, I know CAC exec met this last week to have conversation about the remainder of their year. And I believe that that was, that information was shared out. But could you, Mary, could you tell on behalf of CAC what they're doing for the remainder of this school year while we're in this holding place?
Sure, Dr. Sanders, they are going to, they're going to withhold having their general meeting, which is usually in May, and pick up business in the fall with the voting on some bylaw changes that they've been working on and possibly a new name for the CAC to the Community Advisory Council. And they will elect their officers at that time. And I believe there are a couple other housekeeping matters, but they felt like they could hold off and have that meeting in the fall.
Thank you for sharing the update.
All right, next is recognition of our current student board member, Haley Furtag. And Mr. Sanders, I want to say a few words, if you don't mind. And then we have, we have a plaque for her as well, which we will get to at some point. But Haley, I am so sad we can't do this in person. But we will get to your plaque to you and we'll get to congratulate you and everything else. But in the meantime, thank you for all the work you have done. You have been a valuable addition to this board. Your comments have been insightful and they've given us a perspective that, that we need to hear. And, and you should be very proud of yourself. You've also represented your fellow students very well. And I'm so glad you carried on the tradition of the, of the student summit. I really enjoyed attending it and hearing the thoughtful comments of everyone who was involved there. And you did a great job organizing that and, and getting people to really voice their opinions. We wish you well in the future. I know you're planning on going to college. I'm sure you'll do great. We, you, you are required to come back and visit us and tell us how you're doing. And keep us informed. So we will thank you that, that Mr. Sanders has put a lovely picture of your plaque, which, as I said, we'll get, get to you. And so thank you again. And if everyone could briefly unmute so we can give Haley a round of applause. All right.
And when I put the sign in your yard, I was going to actually also stick the plaque in your yard, but I didn't want it to get ruined. So I'm just kidding. I couldn't come to your door. So you've been a pleasure to work with this year, both on the CEO Student Advisory, Superintendent Advisory, but also on the Board of Education. So I also want to thank you. And I'm sure every board member might want to say a few words about you.
Yes, so I asked my fellow board members to just jump right in.
Haley, it's been wonderful having you on the board. And I wish you well in your future endeavors in college and keep us posted.
Yeah, definitely. I second what Eva said. It's wonderful having you around, great representing Streamwood High School. And we wish you all the best in the future.
John Deveraux here. I agree. It's great to have the student voice and you've done a fantastic job of representing the students of U forty-six. So thank you for your time and good luck as you go forward.
This is Melissa. I know this is a lot of, you know, time that you put into this and we thank you for all the work that you've done. You've done a great job. Thank you for leading the student conference again. I'm so glad you guys were able to get that in. And best of luck to you. I wish you so much luck in the future.
Haley, I just want to say thank you for adding us to your busy schedule and being a part of the board because, as everyone said, the student voice is a very important voice on the board. So thank you. Good luck next year in college and come back and visit us.
Haley, you want to say a few words?
Thank you guys so much for all the kind words. I know this isn't how we expected the year to end, but I'm just grateful that both the board and the district has continued to try to do its best to have everyone keep things running. I'm so happy to have had this opportunity to represent the student body. And I'm truly grateful that the district values student voice so much because it's really a powerful asset. And I know you guys will continue to improve and create a better environment for students and staff. And I honestly just wish you guys the best. I know Natal is going to do great. And I'm looking forward to seeing her continue to represent the student body.
Thank you, Haley. We'll miss you.
I'll miss you guys too. I'll be sure to visit.
Well, you have to come back and visit because we have to get you your plaque and your, your, the sign in the boardroom as well.
The most important things, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is oath of office for the new student board member. And that would be Olivia Howell, who I know is here.
Yep, Olivia is here and Miguel is here. And I don't have a way to split the screen, but Miguel will issue the oath of office to Olivia. They will both stand up and hopefully whenever it's being demonstrated on the screen here, you'll see both of them. So.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Olivia Howell, please say, I will, after the following oath. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of School District U forty-six of King County, Illinois, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of
with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of your ability, and further swear that you shall represent all school district constituents honestly and equally, and refuse to surrender to your responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups, shall avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from your position, and shall not use your board membership for personal gain or publicity, shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by your fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board, shall think no private accident might compromise the board or administration, and shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels."
I will.
Then you are, you have been sworn in as our student board member, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Olivia.
Thank you.
We all look forward to meeting you in person.
Yes, me too, I'm so excited.
All right, now we have to elect board officers, and I guess I turn this over to Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, so next is the election of board officers, the current officer's terms have ended, the election process will now be turned over to me as Board Secretary, who will lead the election process for the board president. Election procedures, nominations can be made by any board member and do not require a second. However, a motion to close nominations is required. Election will be by roll call. Although the Illinois School Code specified board officers of service for two years do your terms pursuant to board policy, our board policy limits these terms to one year at any given time. I will not take nominations for board presidents.
This is John Deveraux, and I nominate Ms. Sue Kerr for president.
Is there anybody else? Nobody else has been mentioned, so I'm not required to, I will require or ask for a motion to close the nomination period.
This is Melissa, I nominate, or I motion to close the nominations.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
6-0, congratulations.
Thank you. So I guess I take it over from, thank you all very much, from here, I will entertain a nomination for vice president.
This is Kate Thomas, and I nominate John Deveraux for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? Could I have a motion to close nomination for vice president?
This is Melissa, I nominate, or I motion to close the nominations.
Seconds, any seconds? I'll second.
I second.
Was it Ms. Owens?
Kate, I think.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I will call, please.
Mr. Deveraux, I should have started with you last, right?
Yes.
How about Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approve, motion has been approved 6-0.
And we have the final nomination for Secretary Pro Tempore, could I have nominations for Secretary Pro Tempore?
This is Eva Porter, and I nominate Melissa Owens for that position.
Are there any other nominations? I have a motion to close nominations.
This is Kate, so moved.
John Deveraux, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan, I'm sorry, Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Congratulations, motion has been approved 6-0.
Thank you all, congratulations to everyone. I should note that the positions of Secretary and Treasurer are held by Dr. King and Mr. Rodriguez, and a couple of years ago, we changed our practice and no longer actually held an election for them as well.
Correct.
Okay, moving on, work sessions, Mr. Sanders.
Our first work session item is the Secondary Art Curriculum Resource Proposal. Let me share my screen as Jamie Geraldo, the Coordinator of Fine Arts, unmutes herself and begins to show the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for allowing me to present to the board this evening. On the screen, you should see the Secondary Fine Arts Resource Proposal. If you recall, last year in February, I brought forward a revised curriculum proposal for secondary art, and at that time, given that implementation was so far removed, we decided to wait to bring the resources forward now. So the purpose of this proposal is to recommend those instructional resources to support that curriculum work. We considered many factors in determining which resources we would include in the proposal, which you will see as we go through. Our proposal aligns to the strategic plan in supporting student achievement and providing equity of experience for students across our various sites, and also supports our staff members to provide them the most up-to-date professional development and resources available to teach secondary art. The materials and the resources that you'll see in this proposal look different than most of the other content area proposals that you are accustomed to seeing. As opposed to textbooks and online digital textbook resources, most of the resources included in this proposal are tools and materials needed to create art, as opposed to actual physical text. We brought back the Curriculum Writing Committee in the fall of 2019 to revisit the initial list that we had sketched out. At that point, we finalized the list, and we collaborated with Information Services to make sure that the technology pieces were in align with the district's technology plan, and received their support and confirmation of the technology pieces that we were requesting. From there, the final list of resources was shared with Business Services to begin collecting cost estimates for all of the various items in the proposal. As you can imagine, since we're not looking at just a couple of textbooks or a couple of digital learning resources, there were quite a good number of individual pieces included in the proposal, and gathering those cost estimates took some time. Our recommendation is that we purchase and implement these proposed resources to support the curriculum implementation, which begins this fall. This will enable all of our students across all of our buildings to have equity of access and equity of quality of their instruction. Over the past 20 or so years, since we have updated secondary art curriculum and resources, we have been able to provide pieces here and there to update what our students need and what our classrooms provide, but it has not been equal across the board, and we would like to do a better job of making sure all of our students have an opportunity. As I mentioned, though, you will see some print resources, they're really just to support how the students are using the art-making tools and equipment that we are including in here. Some of those supplemental support resources include things such as some textbooks to support using the Adobe Creative Cloud apps, some visual posters to show some of the pieces of the curriculum, and then some DVD resources that support, again, at different aspects of the curriculum. So we are proposing that the items included in the proposal are purchased as soon as approval is granted and throughout the summer to be prepared for fall implementation and rollout of the first new curriculum classes. In addition, we will continue to provide professional development for teachers. We have already throughout this school year been providing professional development to support the expanse of their knowledge with the Adobe Creative Cloud suite, and have additional professional development sessions planned, pending COVID-19, of course, for some in-person PD to support where the teachers are in the various different apps that they'll be using. In addition, the teachers also will continue to have access to online on-demand tutorials through the LinkedIn Learning site. So the various costs associated with this proposal, you can find broken down in the actual proposal spreadsheet itself. To summarize in categories, the textbooks and online licenses, this area primarily consists of the Adobe Creative Cloud licenses, which are per user. The supplementary materials include much of the art-making tools and equipment, so things such as easels, kilns, various pieces like that, pottery wheels, et cetera. Technology, I did work with Information Services to create a draft of a fine arts technology plan, so that we are methodically rolling out and incorporating technology that will serve the needs of the fine arts curriculum. So the items included in the technology include both desktop computers, which have higher processing speed and power to run the Adobe Creative Content apps, as well as large screen draw-on specialized monitors that the art students can draw and edit on directly. They are pressure sensitive, the students use a special stylus that can control what their motions affect and how they edit specific things in their images. You'll see the professional development ongoing there, and then capital improvements, which primarily include updating spaces, replacing cabinetry as needed, reinstalling kilns into middle schools where they once were, but then were removed where we need them again now. So that's what's more or less included in the capital improvement costs. So the overall total of this proposal comes to $1,718,733.99. In addition, there are consumables that are associated with art classes, so this would be things like drawing paper, watercolors, high-quality colored pencils, lumber and clay for 3D art, et cetera, film, film paper, et cetera. We did break down with the teachers approximately how much per class they would need to be able to provide the students with the consumable materials to teach the curriculum. So we took the total estimated annual cost of consumables divided by the estimated number of pupils, this is based on enrollment numbers for next year, and the consumable cost comes out to approximately $1,992 per student. This specific proposal, if you again divide by the number of pupils as above, comes down to a cost of $285.27. If you look at that over the seven-year cycle of the curriculum cycle, that comes out to $40.75 per student per year to support these resources for the art curriculum. Of course, if that cycle elongates, that number would go down even further. We will continue to evaluate and assess how well these resources support the curriculum, so that as we get deeper into the curriculum cycle and begin to look at any future changes, we can determine if there are things that we need to reconsider, if there are things that have been very successful that we can, you know, consider expanding, and we'll collect a lot of that data, both anecdotally as well as through student assessment data, teacher and student feedback, et cetera, et cetera. I mentioned a little bit ago that much of the equipment that we have is 20 years old or older, including some of the cabinetry. As we've moved away from, you know, solely hands-on art-making, and we've moved more into a digital realm of art-making, we haven't been able to keep up with the equipment updates necessary to support those art-making needs consistently, at least across the district. So this gives us an opportunity to update and make more equitable across all of our Here are the links for your further consideration. The first link is the complete list of resources, broken out by the different categories as listed on this document, and then also for your reference, the board-approved curriculum documents from last spring. Thank you again very much for your time, I appreciate it.
If you don't mind for me to wrap up, and I'll ask Dr. Johnson away in a little bit as well, as the board knows, from the Board of Finance Committee, we are still in the process of building a budget for next school year with a lot of uncertainty around state funding, among many, and local property tax and other issues. We committed at that time that we would continue to bring these curriculum proposals forward to the board, knowing that we may have to hold off on some of the things that we are proposing to you. So at this point, we are still moving forward with bringing this to the board as a work session item, and we will have further conversation before this moves forward, so that you really know whether or not we are able to put in the budget for next year. Dr. Johnson, anything else you want to add?
No, Mr. Sanders, I think that's accurate, based on the presentation last week in Board of Finance, we know that we are in that place where we are certainly providing these updates and making the Board of Education and our colleagues aware of the ongoing work that's being done around curriculum and/or resource adoption, but we recognize the fiscal constraints and what we will have to do to work within those constraints moving forward, and so we will certainly work at taking the direction from the Board of Education and identifying what we are able to proceed with for resources, and some additional direction on how we prioritize those resources, and perhaps need to adjust timelines as well moving forward.
Thank you, and that concludes the presentation.
Do any board members have questions or comments?
So this is Melissa, going back to the financing of this, was any of this proposal included in this year's budget, or was this all going to be in the next fiscal year budget?
Based on the timing that the materials would arrive, it would all be within next year's budget at this point.
Okay.
So no, it was not budgeted in this year's.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Our next is a contract renewal for Information Services with Catalogic Software Maintenance for Backups. Mr. Phelps is in attendance, or Senior Business Official for Business Services, as well as Laura Macias, the Director of Information Services. The administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Catalogic Software for three years in the amount of $83,991, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This exponentially charged the educational fund, and the cost is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, moving on to work session, contracts over $25,000.
Our first item under contracts over $25,000 is a contract for specialized student services for reading comprehension, cross-cat resource explorations, the intervention solution, crossland literacy. Mr. Phelps is in attendance as well. Mr. Phelps is in attendance, as well as Dr. Satterwhite, Director of Specialized Student Services, and Ms. Fabian Fabiancheck, Assistant Director of Specialized Student Services. I'll do this part, and then we have a PowerPoint to share with the board as well. Administration will recommend approval of the contract with Cross-Land Literacy. We'll copy educational publishing in the amount of $135,344.25 and request authorization or District Administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant and is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. And with that, I will pull up the PowerPoint while Dr. Satterwhite gets ready to present.
Mr. Sanders, Alicia will be presenting for us. But I am available for any of your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Fabiancheck. I'm the Assistant Director of Specialized Student Services. Thank you so much for setting time aside and allowing me to present this proposal. So this particular proposal is for our elementary cross-cut resource and our ELL instructional special education settings. So every elementary school has a resource of teacher and students. And we have five elementary buildings where we have bilingual instructional self-contained classrooms. We have a total of 10 of those classrooms. So this proposal is addressing the needs for reading comprehension for this particular group. I can move on to the next slide. Thank you. I wanted to recognize our committee members. So we started the process during the last school year, actually. The call to committee was in May of 2019. And such a perfect timing with Teacher Appreciation Week. I wanted to acknowledge the committee members, who are mostly our cross-cut resource teachers. We also had three self-contained instructional ELL teachers and our Specialized Student Services teacher leader Jenny Manke. And we consulted with Celia, coordinator for K through six literacy, as well as Sylvia Rodriguez from ELL Department. So the proposal is seeking approval of reading comprehension intervention, which is called exploration. And this is to provide specialized instruction, mostly through pull-out services or in ELL instructional classrooms that would be in a self-contained setting to provide assistance with reading comprehension strategies. So a little background on our rationale. So currently, elementary special education resource teachers, as well as instructional teachers, have access to resources that were basically purchased nine years ago. And we continue to renew them every year, reading mastery and corrective reading interventions. They mostly address basing reading skills fluency, reading fluency. There isn't as much emphasis within those two programs when it comes to reading comprehension. So there it's been a while since we have looked at a specific intervention that would provide direct instruction to students with disabilities. Now, last year, we did send out a survey to the group, to all of our resource and instructional teachers, just asking input about needs for additional resources. And the survey results indicated that there was a need for reading comprehension resources. So basically, what teachers shared is that when we use other resources, our students are learning to read. But then when we try to integrate them within general education classroom, we also want to emphasize reading comprehension because we do read so that we understand and can participate and respond to questions. So our goal was to address those needs and selecting an intervention that would be with resources that are available in English as well as in Spanish. And this particular adoption of the resource addresses U46 Strategic Plan of Student Achievement and Effective and Engaged Staff. So we we indicate that we we are always looking at a variety of strategies to support special education students and to ensure their growth. So we followed the process of resource adoption. I mentioned a call to committee. We looked at three different resources when it comes to services for special education students that would allow for direct instruction from special education teachers. While we were meeting as a committee, we also looked at creating some guiding documents internally that would include strategies that are reading comprehension strategies and just a bank of ideas of how to utilize those strategies, activities, ELL tips for our students that are bilingual. And we did discuss professional development and how we can build a capacity within the district so that we could eventually provide professional development internally, not necessarily always using outside vendors. We also received feedback from Curriculum and Instruction Department, as well as ELL Department, just a lot of questions and strategies about how to support our second language learners and followed by instructional cabinet feedback, as well as instructional council. So as far as learning outcomes, so students receiving special education services, whether they are in cross-cut resource, which is less restrictive, as well as instructional self-contained setting, would have an opportunity to receive structured direct instruction using these resources. There's a very specific sequence of how the intervention is utilized. And it basically starts with modeling the strategy by the teachers or using either digital or specific physical, like strategy poster and think aloud strategies. And there's supported practice where students have partner cards. They those could be utilized individually or with partners. There's a shared reading and then there's independent reading. The resources actually complement the implementation of current integrated curriculum implementation at elementary level because they are utilizing informational text in this intervention. So it's based on science and social studies topics. Another important element to note is that this particular intervention embeds assessment. So there is a progress monitoring tool for for teachers to utilize to be able to measure student progress. And it comes in two forms. So there is a special cue card when students go through a certain level and we are checking on their comprehension. And there's also a running record that can provide much more information, not just on comprehension, but overall reading ability. So that that would be embedded and that would help because all of our special education students who have reading comprehension goals, they would be able to use those tools to monitor progress on those IEP goals. So the implementation of explorations intervention is planned for 2020 and 2021 school year. I did mention the resources. They are all leveled. And what is utilized is something that we currently use in the district, which is Fanta's and Penel levels. So this intervention does utilize that leveling. And we are looking at four different levels that are organized by reading comprehension strategies. The so I mentioned posters and student cue cards. All of the resources are really not consumable. So there's not, there's no workbooks to repurchase every year. Those materials are basically laminated. And there are also not no student licenses to be purchased because this is a direct instruction program. So it is face-to-face with the with the teacher. Now, most recently, just in response to digital learning process, I met with Crossland Literacy and we discussed how this could be provided digitally. So basically, what the company has worked on is putting together exploration intervention modules so that they can provide that digital access and organize levels so that teachers would be able to access all of the information remotely in case we needed to. Now, modules, I mentioned, they're organized per reading comprehension strategies and all of them would be downloadable to be able to provide direct instruction, but also student activities. So when they're downloaded, they could be assigned to students to complete as tasks. When we look at the entire cost, so the sets that I mentioned that don't include any consumables are levels one through four. And that would include, because the leveling starts with the reading ability of the end of first grade reading, which would be Level I. And then it goes all the way to the end of fifth grade. So that is why we have four levels. And as far as access, that would be unlimited because it's not license-dependent. And every school, every elementary school, every teacher who is a resource teacher would receive all four levels. And then we were also talking about our ELL instructional teachers. So we have a total of 10 classrooms. So those would be included in here as well. And then what we did for those strategies, because the last component in the reading comprehension is guided reading, we also included corresponding Spanish guided reading titles for all of those sets. So those are listed as well. And then professional development is provided. Basically, the the vendor provides five full days. And they don't have to be used up as full days. They could be used as half-days. So there's a lot of flexibility that I'll talk about on how they could be utilized. And that is at no additional cost. So the total amount is $135,344.25. So now a little more about professional development. So the plan would be that professional development getting started, full-day session, would be scheduled for Elementary District Collaboration Day at the beginning of the school year. If it needs to be done remotely, it could be done via Zoom or Google Hangout meets. And then the second part of it would be following up with customized coaching sessions. So what what I've done with across all elementary school is clustered them based on the location so that there would be, if we were meeting in person, it would be about eight schools per cluster. And then we would set up half-day coaching sessions so that teachers can observe how the strategies are additionally utilized, ask additional questions about the implementation, and basically receive that support that way through clusters. Getting started session, oftentimes, we we do hire, we do have late hires in special education when we are filling different positions. So it would be important to have a an additional getting started session for our late hires to be able to provide that that full-day opportunity. Now, I did mention we were working on some internal documents that are organized per reading, reading comprehension strategies. So the committee would also be supporting the process of professional development. And they're more than willing to do this when we talk about our like our PPD days that are optional days or, you know, arcane comedy as half-day sessions. So those could be offered, and we started working on some of those documents. And Crossland Literacy has committed to customizing all of the session based on our needs. So basically, exact session description or or agenda would be done together with me and the consultants with input from teachers. Now, as far as additional cost, so resource teachers at elementary levels do not require substitute teachers. So coaching sessions, if they're done in person, they would be able to just participate in those. And we would identify locations for that. So then the only group for coaching that would require substitutes for half-day would be our 10 instructional self-contained teachers. And then as far as evaluation of change goes, we would evaluate the resource implementation using student growth and looking at accelerated growth in Fanta's and Penel levels. So because students can be tested to check what their baseline is in Fanta's and Penel, we would be able to see how much growth they're making in their IEP goals. So that would be our measure. As far as professional development and checking on effectiveness, a survey would be sent to teachers on the effectiveness of professional development and just future needs in terms of PD. And that that is the end of my presentation. Thank you again for allowing me to review this proposal.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you very much for that great presentation. I used the Fanta's and Penel levels, the books and everything. So I'm glad that you're thinking about getting the digital downloads as well. I just can't imagine for nine years that the curriculum that's been used didn't have a focus on comprehension because comprehension is very important in all components of reading, you know, the basics as well. You know, when we talk about social studies and we talk about science and even math problems. So I'm I'm glad that this program has a strong, you know, comprehension component to it. Great presentation. I know the kids will enjoy this program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item for the board's consideration is a contract renewal for Human Resources for Frontline Absence Management or Frontline Absence and Substitute Management System. Mr. Phelps is still here, and Ann Chan, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, is also available to answer questions. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with frontline education for one year in the amount of $35,583.65 and requests authorization for District Administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Educational Fund and is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 school year.
Are there any questions? Okay, next item, please.
Our next is a contract renewal for Information Services for Solar-Winds Maintenance Agreement. Laura Macias is joined, Director of Information Services. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Solar-Winds in the amount of $86,421 and requests authorization for District Administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Educational Fund and is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Okay, moving on, work session bids and proposals.
Our first bid is from Plan Operations for Equipment Purchase Portable Bleachers. Sheila Downs, Director of Plan Operations, is joined to answer any board questions. Administration recommends award a low bid meeting specification to Bleachers International in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand four hundred dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operation Maintenance Fund and is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Are there any questions? In my understanding, these are bleachers that we shared among various schools. So we can easily, we have the equipment to move them, I assume.
Yes, and they're actually able to be moved just in one of our pickup trucks.
Oh, okay.
We've used them for all five high schools in addition to middle schools if so needed. So it would definitely be a shared resource.
Great, thank you.
And this is Melissa. What's the lifespan on these typically?
I don't know offhand, so I'll get back to you. But typically, I would say at least ten years, but I'll verify that and I'll send that response to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I have a question. So you said that they would be shared among five high schools. So if there's an event going on, is it enough to supply one high school at a time? So it depends. There's four separate sets of bleachers. So if we needed to, we could actually split them. So it would just depend. We do have a service, which is FS Direct, which is our event management software. And so we would know ahead of time and we'd work with the athletic director to see who needed it. And then we would, we would give them what they requested. And so it may be that one school gets two hundred and fifty, another school gets six hundred, depending on what the event is that they're hosting and what their capacity needs are. Thank you.
And I assume also that we would watch how we schedule athletic events so that, for example, you don't have Larkin and Elgin having a football game the same day that Barlett and South Elgin do and probably have big crowds at both.
Sure. And another thing is that they're not required for all events. And so, for instance, Barlett only rents bleachers three times a year. And so we would be cognizant of that. And the ADAs, they are in constant communication with one another. So knowing that this is a shared resource, that it will save money from their athletic accounts, I'm sure that they'll work to schedule around events as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I was just gonna say thank you to the team for looking for ways to be thoughtful and save us some money at the same time providing a great service for our communities.
Yes. All right, next proposal.
Last but certainly not least is a proposal from Transportation for a proposal to purchase twenty pre-owned school buses. The board will recall that Mr. Prowl presented this during his agent obsolescence plan a few weeks ago and he returns tonight with this proposal. Administration recommends approval of the proposal for Midwest Transit Equipment in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Transportation Fund and is included in the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Are there any questions?
Madam President, before we, or before you make a, ask for a motion to go to closed session, during public comments, I should have noted that room one forty at the central office was open for members of the public to attend this board meeting. We had it on display and members could have participated the same way anyone was doing so online tonight. So when you see the bookshelves in the background, don't take that to mean that we didn't have the offices open for people to join as well. But there was nobody that came to the central office tonight for the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now I need a motion to go into close. So can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public, or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, the setting of the price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, collective negotiation, negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
The most. Eva Porter.
Eight second.
Roll call, please.
Deborah?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We will be going into closed session now.
Okay, so we leave this meeting and go into another one. Thank you. Okay.